So it's my honor at this time to introduce Leslie Grant, who will be joining us to walk us through this portion of our work session. Leslie?
Hello, everybody. Thank you very much Superintendent Polio. Good to see you all again. And I wanted to first just get an update if we could. I think Board Member Marshall, you were going to give an update on the process and how much outreach was done and talk about whether or not you feel like you have, y'all have done the listening and heard from the community in order to go forward with this work and also maybe from, I'm not sure who was going to report out, on the data and what we have collected, so.
Yeah, so thank you, Leslie. So the implementation committee has currently been meeting once a month to go over where we are in the process. And so we have, at this time, conducted in-person listening sessions with multiple groups within the community, as well as sent out a survey that I think has garnered almost 1,000 responses in the past couple of weeks. And so we have a lot of feedback that we have been given. And so our next step is to now set our date for utilizing that feedback for setting goals and guardrails. And so I think last time, Leslie, we talked, and correct me if I'm wrong, but at this point, we don't have a lot of wiggle room in our timeline, correct?
I think that's a good way to put it. We would like to move forward with this process, and that is an essential step before the administration can adapt to what you're looking at.
And so getting the date set for our goals and guardrails retreat is of the utmost importance right now, so that we can make sure to get these goals and guardrails set, so that we can begin the process of student outcome focused governance. Thank you.
Sure, and I do want to, we had given two dates that were back to back, and it was either Friday or Saturday, and several of you responded initially had chosen the Friday date that probably would work best for the administration as well. I know I got a response that that's not tenable for at least one of you. But I do want to make sure that we have that date set now. So that would be Friday, November 10th. We were asking all of you to come together for, we believe it would take a full day worth of work to take what you heard from the community during your listening sessions, put that together with the data from the administration about where, what are the current reality for students in JCPS, and then you will craft your goals and guardrails from those two pieces of information. So November 10th, Friday, November 10th, again. And if there, I've not heard back from a couple of you, but if I could get a, just a response, I see thumbs up there, that'll serve in lieu of an email. But if we could get that tightened down and so we can begin planning exactly what we need to do for that day, I would appreciate it. And as soon as we get that data from you, we will begin doing an analysis of it so that we can sort of whittle it down and come up with a consensus. And all of you will have access to the full breadth and width of the data. But again, our goal is to bring you a summary of what we believe rose to the top in terms of what you heard. So are there any questions about the next step in the process or where we're trying to get to?
Doesn't seem like there's any questions, Leslie.
Okay. You all know, you can feel free to reach out later if you, if something does come up. But again, our interest in doing this and getting this process underway is that your superintendent and his team cannot respond to focusing their work on the student outcomes that you have heard from the community you want until you give them what you want, which is setting definitive goals around what you heard from the community, what their vision is, and what you, as board members decide matches with the data for the reality of students, and then what the guardrails are. What are the values that they need protected as you are, as the superintendent goes along the journey to accomplish those goals that you set? So that is the process. And again, we were trying to get that done so that the administration has time to react to those within the next budget cycle. So that's why we're trying to get this done before the end of the calendar year here. So if, again, any questions about this process at all or where we're at, we do have an implementation timeline, have made that available, and certainly would be happy to talk to any of you around where we're at on that or any of the steps on that. But one of the things that is very important is just that, just as you evaluate your students and their competencies in your schools and your administration and your superintendent, we also ask that your journey to focusing on student outcomes comes with accountability for yourselves. And so we are asking that quarterly, you complete a board self-evaluation. We did this, we've done it twice. We did have an initial one where nothing really was on the playing field yet. We had a check-in in June. And so I would like to, if we could, go through it tonight with you and just see, get consensus from each of you about where you're feeling. So I am going to, I had wondered, do you have copies of it? Is it up on your screens on your desk? Or, oh, there's Carolyn. All right. If you want to take that down to maybe 75%, something so we can see a little bit more of it. And then you go over to the, yeah, if you can minimize the size of that a little bit, Carolyn, sorry. On the zoom down there, go down to the 100%. Yeah, there you go. Just, yeah, so that we can see more of it, and I just want to make sure that you all could read it. So what we had done at the last meeting was look at this and just sort of get a guesstimate on where you think you might be at the end of this quarter or this quarter, and wanted to see if there are things that we thought we might get done that we haven't yet, and that would be the goals and guardrails. We have not gotten those set yet. I think that was a stretch goal for us last time we wanted to get there, but we haven't done that yet. If you could just take a minute individually and read through, again, do you have copies with you on the desk, either printed out or available on your screens? I can't really see folks, so if somebody can give me an audible.
No, we do not.
Okay, okay. All right, so we're just going to look at this. If we can go, if you can move up and down with it, maybe, Carolyn. So in, all right, so the first column, the vision and goals, we start at the top in the, if we're in the, sort of the pink color means that we're not focused yet. We haven't adopted the goals yet, so we're going to stop there in terms of the vision and goals category. The values and guardrails saying we have not adopted those yet, so we are going to stay in the pink there. Monitoring accountability, we haven't adopted the goals, so we can't monitor anything yet. We're probably clear across the board in the not focusing yet category, which is, okay, it's fine, it's where we're starting, and just making sure that we come back and quarterly check in on your progress, because this is going to start to move. But I do want to get each and every one of you familiar with this process, with the board self-evaluation. If you want to move down the road to becoming a board focused on student outcomes, it's going to be important that we pay attention to what the behaviors are and trying to reach. If you go all the way to the bottom of the document, you'll have the blue, which means you're mastering your focus on student outcomes, then that really is where we would like to get with you. It's going to take a while to get there, but that would be, the recommendation is get familiar with the activities in blue and make sure that we are working towards that. Again, this is going to take a while, but you can look at the mastering under the first one there, that the board used a process that included students, parents, staff, and community members in a way that leads them to express ownership of the adopted guardrails and goals, I think we're in the next column. But that is why we wanted you to do a thorough engagement with the community, so that these goals and guardrails really are embraced by the community, so that you did that listening and had the community buy-in that you need in order to make these their goals and guardrails. So. Do you have any questions on this process? And I know each of you probably have saved and enshrined your little student outcome focused manual that we got during our two-day workshop, and that is available online for you. It is this form. You can find this exact information in the printed copy, and I can make sure to get you some too, and I would share that with the community as well, just so they understand what you're, what you're trying to do.
Hey, Leslie, this is Chris Paul. Could I ask a question?
Hey, Chris.
When, on that last item, you mentioned community ownership of goals and guardrails. Obviously, you know, we gather a lot of input, and then it's all of our responsibility to turn that input into the goals and guardrails. Do we, and apologies if, I should know this already, but do we then kind of like take our draft goals and guardrails back to the community, you know, to gauge how the community feels about our interpretation of their input? How does that work?
That would be a best practice, and we did have that built into the calendar initially. I would recommend that. You're probably not going to do this long and broad a listening session that way, but it is important, I think, that the community understands after we have the session where you draft those, that, you know, they do reflect what they were, what they were asking you. So, yes.
Thank you.
And I do think that that is something that you need to think about, how you're going to do that. It is going to be the, you know, in the middle of December when you get that, and it's not a bad time. I mean, certainly not the summer. So just thinking about how, how you want to approach the community with the, what you came up with and verify that you, you know, you did the listening correctly, so.
Are there any other questions? All right, thank you, Leslie.
You're very welcome, y'all. Enjoy.
That will receive an update on the implementation of school safety officers.
Thank you, Dr. Shul and board members. We are excited to bring you this update. I know this had been requested for some time. We wanted to make sure that we got our new executive administrator of security investigations on board, which he has been, and for the better part of six, eight weeks, something like that, I think. I don't know if it's been that long, but welcome to a board meeting after just a few weeks, but he's done a lot in just a little bit of time. And that's Todd Kessinger. I'd like to start by bringing in our chief of staff, Katie DeFerrari, who will begin the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Polio. Good evening, board members. We're excited to have this update with you, and we really wanted to wait to be able, again, to introduce our new executive administrator, which I will do in just one moment. But I did want to make sure that we thanked our prior leadership, Chief Mullin, for everything he did, and also the team of officers that were there, leading the work after he retired before we could get our new executive administrator in place. Everyone was working hard just to try to make sure things were safe and smooth as possible during that transition. So I felt it would be remiss not to acknowledge those folks. I'm very excited to introduce Todd Kessinger. I'm going to let him say a few things about himself, but mainly Todd retired from LMPD, also went to work in private industry for LG&E as their director of security or executive director of security. Lots of different types of experience, and we're excited to have him with us. So Todd, I'm going to let you introduce yourself.
Good evening. Thank you for the introduction. I'm Todd Kessinger. I did retire from LMPD in 2019, retired as the major, over the major crimes division. During my career with LMPD, I had multiple positions and assignments, highlights including supervisory positions on SWAT and in the homicide unit. When I left in 2019, I went to work in the private sector for LG&E, like Dr. DeFerrari said. I think it was a, it was a good experience for me. I value the time at LG&E. For one, it's just, it's an outstanding organization and company. But for two, it put me in a situation in corporate security where I had to deal with police departments and jurisdictions throughout the state of Kentucky from a civilian, a non-police role, which was eye-opening for me. And it gives you a new perspective that I think is valuable for this position going forward. I do want to kind of build on what Dr. DeFerrari said. I want to extend some gratitude to Chief Mullins. Chief Mullins and his 43 years of service to the city of Louisville, 20 of those were to JCPS. Chief Mullins was a colonel on the Louisville Police Department when I began my career back in the 90s. So I've known him for a long time. We worked together through the years. I had multiple assignments on LMPD that I worked with JCPS investigators while they were under supervision of Chief Mullins. They were always extremely professional and effective at what they did. So I appreciate that, and I think that Chief Mullins built a strong foundation here with the security investigations unit, and we hope to build on that. And part of that foundation includes the current civilians and officers that are on the department in the security investigation. So I look forward to building on that. Since we're on the topic of staff, we'll go to the next.
Yes, sir.
Slide. So to give you a current update on our staffing levels, we have 10 district security monitors. We have 10 sworn police officers, including me, that are not SSOs, but are sworn police officers. As of today, we have 14 school safety officers and six recruits that are going to the academy. Previously, when we started, we had five safety security officers, and we had four in the academy. So in the last couple of weeks, we've been fortunate enough to hire 11 people, nine of which are certified police officers, two we're going to send through the academy. So that would give us a total of 20 security officers. And I'm confident to tell you at this point that if I posted the vacancy today, which we're not, we don't plan on doing, but if I posted it, I'm confident that we could hire another five to seven officers fairly quickly. But we don't want to expand it too fast, so.
Couple of things to add to that first. That's really awesome. For us to get 11 in the last couple of weeks was a significant jump for us. I want to make sure everyone understands that the district security monitors are not sworn officers. Those were the individuals that were part of the proposal and plan to help us as we were staffing the SSO positions, but they are an excellent asset, and we do plan to maintain those positions, and there are no vacancies. In the sworn officer positions, to help you think through that, those are leadership positions, commanding positions, investigators. Those are positions that were more historically in the department before the 30 SSO positions were added, and we have one vacancy in that section of officers. And then, again, we have 14 now that are ready to go. We have nine brand-new ones that will start in October. Again, we have, and we'll look at this slide, and I'll let Chief Kessinger share with you, but we have six recruits. You can see on this slide, we have one on medical leave right now, six recruits. So if we add all those together, it's 20, and that's 10 vacancies for SSOs. And to be clear, that means 24 sworn officers, six recruits to be officers, 10 vacancies. So we just want to make sure everybody sees that progress. We're really kind of starting to get somewhere, and that's a great thing. Chief Kessinger, if you want to share where the recruits are in the academies and when they should be finished?
We have three recruits that are in the academy right now, and they will graduate and be on the street in December. We have two that we want to send to the academy in October. Now, this is going to be fluid, because LMPD has agreed to accommodate us on a couple spots in their academy, but on our end, logistically, we have to get a lot of pre-testing done before they can attend that academy. So we still have some loose ends with our two recent new hires to try to get them in the academy in October. If we can't make the timeline, we will send them through DLC JT in Richmond in January or February. But the goal is to try to expedite this and get them in this October class with LMPD. And then we have one other recruit that will be starting the academy in December, and he will graduate in April. The reorganization, the timeline for that, I really don't plan on making any changes until January. It's easy to step in and start moving things around, but I really wanted to try to get in and learn the job myself and see what everybody's doing before we start making a lot of changes. But the history with security investigations, when Chief Mullin started, their job was basically to secure buildings, school buildings and stuff after hours, and then they worked investigations that came up during the day. So now you fast-forward to today where we're trying to throw 30 SSOs on the street, we're obviously going to have to reorganize that and change some things. So if you skip all those bullet points, you go to the last one, that's kind of my vision or my goal is to get to that last bullet point where we have a patrol division, an investigation division, and then an administrative division, which encompasses the district operations center, the fleet, the property room, and just various things at that point. But before we can get there, we have to do a complete comprehensive review. I'm meeting with officers right now. We're going over all their assignments, the responsibilities, trying to figure out, you know, how many people are doing cross-functional things and doing just various tasks, and we're going to try to organize that and streamline it. Staffing and supervision, we have to build that infrastructure as far as organizational charge and span of control. We can't add 30 officers without supervision. We have to, we have to have some accountability with multiple things. And then recruiting and training, we're going to go with our current model of recruiting. I mean, we're looking for certified police officers, whether they're retired or current in another department. That's going to be our main target for now, but eventually, when the numbers get up there, we want to start recruiting. I mean, with 100,000 students, we want to start recruiting people from JCPS to bring up and hire and eventually send them through the academy and let those students eventually take this over and take our places down the road. But for now, we want to get up to our staffing numbers with 30, so we're going to continue what we're doing, and then we'll transition once we get up to the correct staffing levels. The district operations center, I'm going to go through that on another slide, because that's a.
I'll go ahead and move to that one.
So this is what, you know, our, our review's going to look like. Obviously, we're assessing all of our current practices. That's everything. We're going to assess everything that we're doing. You know, we're already looking at the supervision, touched on the accountability. We're looking at the SSO policy and procedures, all policy and procedures to what revisions need to be made. You know, we're going to evaluate our training, our training committees, really other parts of this review, like our vehicle fleet. We need to make sure we have the right type of vehicles, the right number of vehicles that's conducive for what we're trying to do. And scheduling coverage, you know, we can't have everybody working the same seven to three or eight to four. We're going to adjust our schedules to allow more optimal coverage. You know, from what I've seen in my first four weeks here, we get really busy at certain times of the day, you know, and the mornings are busy, then they hit a little lull, and then from four to six seems to get busy. So I want to adjust those coverage hours so that we're covering times when we are busy. And then the district operations center, the structure, staffing, and equipment, the way that it's set up right now, I don't think it was ever designed to dispatch 30 officers out on the street. So they're receiving calls for maintenance. It's really kind of a catch-all. Somebody doesn't know the answer to a question, they call 3121. So we need to look at the structure, the staffing of the operations center. We want to put the right amount of people in the right hours to make sure that all the calls are being handled. One of the, one of the complaints that I've heard so far from talking to people is response time and the operations that are getting back with people when they call. So that's something that we'll look at, and we'll try to increase the efficiency and the effectiveness of the operations center. And the goal for that is just to increase response time. And then we have to look at the equipment. You know, the dispatch equipment's not my specialty, so I'm going to lean on other people from metro safety come in, take a look at it. We're going to look at what we have, we're going to look at what we need, and then we'll come up with a complete plan, and we'll present that at a later date. But the first four weeks, I really wanted to focus on trying to hire some people and get some immediate help to the officers on the street. The next step for me is I'm going to focus on the district operations center and really try to find out what we need in that area and get that up to speed.
Okay, staffing for the implementation of the weapons detection system. The good news for us is for our Phase 1, you can see that we're intending, and we still are to this point, intending to go live with that first batch of high schools, essentially the first half of schools, beginning in later October, and then again going through winter break. Chief Kessinger feels like we will be able to support those schools with our own officers. We will have enough to be able to provide that supervision and support in the mornings, and we'll talk about times in just a moment. Phase 2, we definitely want to work on an RFP if we need additional support, because it's highly likely that we will need more people to make sure that we get the rest of those schools the support they need. Clearly, we'll use as many of our own as we can, and we may be able to do a portion of those schools with our own. However, we will be creating an RFP this fall, so that is ready to go, and we have that process ready when we need to enact that during the spring semester. What we're looking at doing is schools bringing in essentially those folks to help with check-ins, roughly 40 minutes, or essentially when schools are kind of opening their doors in the morning, and then staying until 90 minutes to two hours to get students through. Obviously, if we have any extreme situations with any school for any reason, we will adjust those times accordingly. They will clearly be flexible to the officers that are working with those schools, and the intent is that the officer will be consistently the same person supporting that school unless, of course, they're sick or on vacation. But that won't be a rotation, it will be a consistent presence, so schools can build a relationship, students will recognize the same individual on campus, things of that nature. So we have been diligently working. Chief Kessinger and I have already spent tons of time, and we have spent time with Chief Dossett, we have spent time with Chief Moore, we have spent time with lots of individuals going through both the policy and procedures together. It reminds me even more than I am not a police officer. And so as we go through that, it's been really important for Chief to be able to ask questions. He also met with Minerva, who assisted with creating those policies and procedures, to really understand spirit, like what were we getting at, what were you trying to accomplish? And again, from a police person to a police person, she was able to really explain things in ways that I can't, and I wasn't part of that process. So I also wasn't present for some of those, the creation of those policies. Clearly, Jonathan Low has also been at the table. He was also present during the creation of those things. What it has made clear to me is it is a way bigger lift than it seems. To be able to, one, help our school leaders understand what their role is regarding what do the officers do and not do, and how are we trying to work this system together to make sure that it's fulfilling the vision that the board had. First thing that we're looking at is it is clear that we want to train officers in large groups as much as possible. Obviously, it's just an efficiency issue. If you've watched our staffing to this point, it's been popcorn-ing and moving, meaning that five people wasn't a consistent five people. We might have a person there promoted to a different position. It's not like we had the same people sitting at the table for those few positions that we've had to this point until we hired the 11. So we are going to onboard everyone. Chief Kessinger plans to have everyone receive commensurate training, the same training, regardless of what type of sworn officer or even district security monitor. We want everyone to have access to the additional district training, things about climate, restorative practices, students with disabilities, they will all be getting those components. Chief Kessinger has already convened and met with this training committee and started laying out training plans with a vision of also having another second wave later in the fall, so that we can get everyone trained and up to speed. Along with that, I think it's really important to consider, we have to train school administrators and these folks together. It has to be a collaboration, and they have to hear all of us say these things together so it's one voice, and everyone can ask the questions that they want to ask, so that, again, as we're implementing, it's really, really clear, when do you call for support? What are you calling for support for? If you want someone to come in and work with a group of students, you know, all of the things that are laid out in those procedures and policies, we need to make sure everyone, including the officers, understand what we're trying to accomplish with. including the officers, understand what we're trying to accomplish with, and still even help people understand, once we have the 30, what's the difference between someone that's an SSO and someone that's performing other sworn police duties in the Jefferson County Department? So you can see, it is a little more complex than just saying, well, let's go and let's do it. The other thing that we've been working extremely hard with Chief Dossett on is the data collection component of the policy and the SOPs, really making sure that we are going through what it's asking us to track. Working with Chief Dossett, we have created a draft, or yeah, incident form. We've been getting lots of feedback from the officers. We were able to have Chief Kessinger sit down with them and again, get more around how we want to do that, because it has to be something that's user-friendly, that they can use on a device, or something that's easy for them to enter, because they're expected to enter it immediately after they visit a school. And so getting through that and also having something that Chief Dossett can be getting, pulling reports from, making sure things are accurate, and organizing that data in a way that makes sense to deliver to all the stakeholders we have to deliver it to. So again, we've been working very hard on that, and I think are pretty close to being able to go live with the incident form as it's written in the procedures and make sure that we can start meeting with all of the teams. The internal data team has already met. That is the team that's working through the reports that we want to create and ultimately give to stakeholders like you, General Counsel, and the committee and the community. The community committee's first meeting is October 12th. Those folks have already been invited, so that is coming. And by then, we'll have some sample reports and things to be able to show them that we should be able to consistently offer at those quarterly meetings. One item that sticks out that we will have to continue to revisit is the frequency of reporting to stakeholders like Dr. Polio, Kevin Brown, and you, because right now it says like three days from an arrest. Okay, that is not going to be a reasonable turnaround for us to intelligently get you what you need, because remember, that would be every three days from an event. So if there's an event every day, it's like every day we're providing you a report, which makes no sense. So we are probably going to put that on maybe a two to four week rotation where everything is listed together and you get everything on one report, all the incident form information, and then all of the arrests, all the things that are listed. So not changing any of the information you're getting, but just the frequency so that we can properly manage it, because we just, that isn't a reasonable, the way that it's written. So I think I'm going to go ahead and let Chief Kessinger talk a little bit about the procedural part of it. And I've covered some of that, Chief, so whatever you think you need to add with that.
Well, I mean, just a couple of things that we have to change on the paperwork, the title changes of who we report to and different things like that. And there's some police terminology in there, it's a little ambiguous that we want to kind fix and adjust. But the biggest thing that we want to address is the opening of the transition center. So the policy and procedures were written prior to the opening of the transition center. So we still call the CDW before a juvenile is taken into custody, but 99.9% of the time, they're going to be taken to the transition center, which is really no different than site release, because once they get to the transition center, they're going to call and make arrangements for that person to be picked up. So we really want to revisit that and make sure that it's applicable to what we're doing now since the transition center opened. I think Dr. D. Ferrari touched on the collaboration and the cross-division onboarding, so.
And one thing, just board members, to make sure that you know, when the detention center, the youth detention center, closed downtown and they opened the smaller center out in Linden, ultimately recently, I mean, maybe six, I'm trying to think, I've lost track of how long the transition center's been open, but for a very long time, including the time that our policy and SOPs were created, there was nothing besides a student being detained in Linden, which was a very small number of students that judges were sending, or youth, that judges were sending to that location. Now, that's where a student can meet with the CDW, and there is supervision there, police supervision. And if our officers took a student, they would not have to stay, whereas in the past, they would have to stay, wait with the court-designated worker, then transport the student either home or to the youth center in Linden. Now, they leave the student, if they need transport, that is handled by the staff that are at the transition center. So there's a couple of components of the procedure that will change, because we won't know what the judge says or what they end up doing at that immediate time. So there's just a few shifts, again, nothing major, but just for transparency, that's kind of a new development, and it wasn't a tool that was existing when the procedures were written. And again, I'll finish with, it's just going to be essential that we cross-train and really work with our school leaders and our officers as a collaborative team so that they really understand the purpose of what they're there to do and how they are there to serve that role. And again, adhere to the expectations that are in the policy and procedures. It's very clear the way that we want that to work, and I think we just need to make sure that our procedures support that and that everyone is trained extremely well to know what to do when and how to collaborate and whose role it is to do various things. So we're excited about having some more on the team. I think that Chief is right, we will probably have another bundle or cohort in the next couple of months. And again, we will just continue to try to get this standing up, and hopefully by the end or mid-spring maybe, we'll kind of be staffed and where we need to be and starting to really be able to put this together with the vision that was created by the board. So, any questions?
Thank you, Dr. D. Ferrari. Welcome, Chief Kessinger. We'll start our questioning with Mr. Marshall.
Thank you for this update, and thank you for your hard work and welcome. Glad to have you as part of the team, but I have no questions at this time.
Ms. Duncan?
Well, I have a few things that I'd like to ask about. You know, one of the things that I had asked for during the year, and I asked Deena to go ahead and run things for me, I kept up with our weapons that were confiscated, I think we had 207, not counting knives. And for me, and those include pellaguns, tasers, stun guns, handguns, Leavy guns. I think one of the things that spelled success for me in this program was the fact that all of those things were taken and we didn't have people hurt with those. So I'm very proud of the program that we're developing, and thank you for joining us and leading us in this and helping us grow this. But I know, I feel very positive, very comfortable about our officers and what they're doing for our schools. You know, they went, go to the threat, they sometimes have to make the arrests if it's appropriate, and then they also have to go to court. And one of the things I'd like for us to keep up with is the success rate for when they take arrests to court. We've been, before, when we had our SRO program, we were accused of arresting kids for throwing paper wads, you know, which is absurd, but the accusation was made here at the meeting. So I would like for us to keep up with that success rate of the arrests, because it does show, number one, that they needed to be arrested and that there was evidence for that. So I think it's an important number for us. I also want to hope we keep up with the number of times they're called to schools, because that's also very important for the community to know. We need our officers. When they're called over 2,000 times, that's significant, and the community needs to be aware of that. One thing I wanted to ask about was the hours. Are you considering anything, you know, we have 100 hours of training, which there were a lot of things thrown in to, I think, help get support for the policies here. But will there be any consideration of, or any evaluation of whether we need all of those 100 hours or whether that could be maybe trimmed in some way or streamlined?
So, I mean, we're going to adhere right now to what's in the procedures. Those actually aren't part of the policy, if I remember correctly. I would need to, I examine those documents regularly, but I can't recall which one or if they're in both. But we plan to accommodate that. However, we don't plan to have them have all of that by the first day. So that will be an ongoing training plan that will include the summer. And again, Chief has already met with stakeholders in the required departments. That team had a prescribed kind of set of folks to be on it, including some mental health individuals, all of which will be very helpful to be able to lay out what they're going to do when. And I also think that Chief, if I understood him correctly, I think would also like them to have some choice, because there are lots of topics and things they can do in the 60, and we can weight that and set that up several different ways. And so I know that in their first meeting, they've already been laying out exactly who kind of, who's going to be in charge of choosing content and offering supports. And I know Chief has already met with his officers and asked them about areas of interest for them and for them to let him know. So that planning calendar is being created, because obviously, we want to include this first wave of 11 in with the others that we already have, so that we don't have to do the same thing 40 different times, right? We want to be able to efficiently train our officers beyond the police-required 40. So we don't foresee that being a challenge. We will be keeping track of that calendar, what they're doing when, and we will absolutely get feedback from the officers. And if we think that there's a shift needed, we'll come back and ask for it.
Very good, that's important. I don't want, I just want it to be meaningful training for our officers and see it as that. Just a couple more things. Wanted to ask about when we reorganize and we then begin to break down supervision, are we going to recognize the fact that more responsibility will probably require more money for our officers? Because right now, I don't think there's any distinction.
I will say, I'm going to let Chief address the reorg. I will tell you, there is no question that the reorganization will come with pay changes depending on how people are classified, just like any other org chart situation. So individuals have not changed any of that, and it's been on hold for Chief to be able to make those decisions. And so I'll go ahead and let you address the actual.
Yeah, once we start, put it together, put together an org chart, there are going to have to be supervisory positions in there, which I think would naturally result in a paying increase, because they'll be responsible and accountable for a lot more than just their own actions. So we will put all that together. I don't know exactly how it's going to look yet. So we're going to take a couple of months and try to draw everything out and play with it. But once we get that together, we'll bring it back and present it.
Very good, thank you so much. And just one other thing, there's kind of a gray area on authority at bus stops. And I don't know if you've thought about this or not, but we, we will, you know, ordinarily, as discipline, we do door-to-door. Door of the school, they get on the bus, they ride the bus home back to their door. Discipline covers door-to-door. What about our police authority? Does it match that, or is it just to where they get off the bus?
Well, it's kind of a gray area, and you really need a legal response or confirmation from it. There's ways that you can, depending on if there's a memorandum of understanding with Louisville Metro Police Department. There's certain things that you can work into it, but right now, the way that we're doing it is we will request LMPD for assistance in those areas. You know, I will research it and look at other options, because we've had, we've had a couple of incidents. We've had a theft from a school where the case ends up in a neighborhood and, you know, arrest powers and authority come into question if the incident started at a school, started at a school event, and then transferred over somewhere else. So we have a couple of options that we'll be researching and looking at.
All right, thank you so much. I appreciate the report and having you come on board with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan. Ms. McIntosh?
Thank you, thanks for being here tonight, welcome. Few questions. Piggybacking maybe a little bit off of Court Member Duncan, if it is a, and I'm thinking mostly like after-school sporting events, things like that, where we have a lot of community members, parents, something happens, somebody dials 911, right? Because they're not going to know your number or our number, they're going to dial 911. Are we connected to Metro Safe Dispatch where you all would get that call immediately with them, or how does that work?
We are. Our dispatch works with Metro Safe. So once we get up and running, once we get fully staffed, we may be able to do better in that area. But as of now, because of staffing, if they call 911, Metro Safe will dispatch LMPD or whatever jurisdiction it is, and then they would notify us. So there is a delay in it, but a lot of times, you know, our officers work well with the officers in those jurisdictions. So we're aware of it, but Metro Safe will contact our district operations center and let them know that there's a run going there.
Okay. So again, kind of along the same lines of collaboration with the other departments, if we have students who are taken into custody in the community, how are LMPD or St. Matthews or whomever it is, how are they communicating to you all? Or are they that they've had one of our students in custody? Because I'm thinking of situations where a student could potentially be arrested for a violent crime at night over the weekends, and then they just show back up on Monday or the next morning or whatever. How does-
So we handle that in two ways. One, we get those charges. So we are made aware of community charges, and we have a system through that, through pupil personnel, and those are organized and obviously communications are made. There are certain notifications that are statutory for us to make, things of that nature. Additionally, I'm not sure if you recall, well, you must not recall, but I'm going to remind you, when we approved the new violence prevention team staff, one of those is a juvenile court liaison. So there is a culture and climate staff person daily in juvenile court that is there as a liaison from Jefferson County. They're there to remove barriers, answer questions for families, let a family know, like, you know, let us know, was a student in court. Sometimes we have students that are receiving medical attention, sometimes they're on home incarceration, like all of those communications are shared, and also that person's there to be able to give information to other relevant officials of the court as well. So that has been very, very helpful for us to be able to avoid dangerous situations, make sure that we have appropriate placements, and also provide support to families that are confused. It is confusing, sometimes things happen quickly, and a lot of times, families just want to make sure, especially if it's between visits to court, have questions about lots of different kinds of things, and our staff member is able to support those.
Well, I think some of my concern though is coming from, and I did remember that, but I think some of the concern is around still having students in our buildings who are under court supervision, you know, come to class with their ankle monitors, which of course then is both fear-inducing and potentially traumatizing to other students in the room and things like that. So probably this connects a lot to the anti-gang efforts that I was also going to ask about, because we're still hearing from a lot of our constituents, parents, staff members about potential violence, how, not just the frequency of fights, it's not so much the frequency, but the ferocity and the violent nature of them, bringing mace, macing their hands before they throw punches so that they can induce the most amount of harm, those kind of things are happening. So I'm wondering how all of this is going to fit together. And so then my follow-up question to that would be, are any of our policies that we have currently in place inhibiting our officers from being able to not just respond, but also prevent some of these violent occurrences within our schools?
I'll let you answer that, Chief.
No, but that will be part of the review. Like, I don't have enough data really to, or incidents to give you an accurate statement. I don't think so, from what I've seen so far, but we'll go back and we'll look at that. The issue that you run into that I see, and I saw this quite a bit when I was with the homicide unit, a lot of time criminal activity or suspicious activity, whatever, once you get linked to gang activity, or you have a threat, and a lot of it's subjective. So you don't really have facts, you don't really have a lot to go on. So it's easy to get information from the parents, or to get information from people saying, you know, do we have this threat, or we have this activity? But I mean, honestly, the situation where we have to have facts and act on that or good suspicion, so a lot of, you just have to work through it. And I'll look at that as we go, and when we have more data to review, I'll come back and probably, I'll be able to answer that question more accurately.
Okay, I see that I'm out of time, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McIntosh.
Thank you, Ms. McIntosh, Dr. Cole.
Hi, thanks for being here. Just one request and one comment to better, and this may exist already, but or maybe it's coming together. Is there, does there exist an org chart for SSOs? Like, and like this whole structure that you're describing? I'm just trying to like visualize.
So when you approved the proposal and plan in 2022, there was a narrative structure about regional assignments, one high school, one to two middle schools proximal, a small cluster of elementary schools, like that. That's written into a narrative, which was the vision for how these assignments would be made. That, to me, is the really literal part that's kind of easy. I mean, I, that will not be difficult for us to do. I think where Chief Kessinger really has work to do is to think about how many of those individuals need to be supervised by how many people, and really trying to create a structure where we know what's going on and can really be able to track and see easily and also allow for our officers to be able to confer with their commanding officer because there's some language around that in the procedures. And then also so that Chief Kessinger always has a pulse on what's going on. We have a great way right now to communicate between school leadership and our police department, and we keep each other very aware even throughout the day. So that's been very helpful so that folks on Chief Moore's team also know, Chief Kessinger knows, people like me know, I can consult with the superintendent. So I agree with you, those systems are not in an organizational structure. I think that, from what I understand from those that were involved with it, they kind of had a loose understanding of the way they wanted it to be, but we're open to new leadership creating that.
Yeah, no, that's great. Yeah, and I'm not criticizing anybody for it not necessarily existing in a concrete form yet, just as it comes together.
Sure.
It'd be just to visualize how that, because I know back in June, we traded information about, you know, the difference between SSOs and non-SSO sworn officers, and that was helpful. But especially now with new leadership, it'd be really helpful to have really clear role differentiation, I think. To, I mean, to the extent that it's helpful on the ground. I mean, I know there's always going to be some overlap and whatever. But so we can evaluate, you know, do our job is evaluating the program's effectiveness and things of that nature. And then the comment I have is, you know, I was really glad to hear you both mention the the policies and and vision of the program that the board approved back in 2020. But just as to highlight, and obviously, there's a whole long section on philosophy and what's, but just to highlight one, one piece of it, we approved language that says, quote, "A central goal of implementing the system of strategies to develop positive relationships in schools is reducing the number of students who become engaged with the juvenile justice and criminal justice systems." So obviously, kid brings a gun to school, yeah, I mean, they're engaged with the justice system, no question about it. But but it, the board was very clear that we want to do everything that we can to avoid getting kids in the juvenile justice and criminal justice system. And I just hope that as we're firming things up, that we keep that front and center. So thanks very much.
Thank you, Dr. Cole. Thank you again for this presentation. I am curious, how quickly will the 10 vacancies be filled? What is the timeline or expectation for that?
Well, I'm not really in a big hurry as far as a couple of reasons. For one, we want to bring in the first group, get them equipped, we want to get them trained, and we want to get them out on the streets. And then we also just don't, we don't want to hire the next, we want to find the right people for the job. So hate to put a timeline on it. I think that we could fill it pretty quickly. This past time, I think we had 30 applicants that we went through. So I think once we post it, we'll have plenty to choose from, but I don't really want to get locked into a situation where we're going to hire 10 people by January because we're going to take our time, and we're going to try to to choose the right people that that fit for this job. So I mean, I'm confident, thankful to think that, you know, within a year that we would be able to get fully staffed, but could be much sooner. Just we'll have to see who who we can attract and what candidates we have to choose from.
Okay. Thank you. I would like to ditto Dr. Cole's statement. I think as we make some of these implementations concerning student safety and just trying to keep our guns rid of weapons, that it's important that we always keep our eyes toward ensuring that as best we can, that we help students not be engaged with the criminal justice system. I do think we can walk and chew gum at the same time. And Dr. DeFerrari, I trust you a whole lot, so.
I appreciate that. And we can, we can walk and chew gum.
Thank you again for this presentation and welcome, Chief Kessinger. We look forward to working with you. And before we end this presentation, I think it's appropriate to give kudos to Chief Stan Mullins, who did so.
Thank you. You go back there. I was proud of you.
I'll put these three, I think, back in last week, or said, thanks to Chief, Chief Mullins.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll receive our presentation. Thank you, Dr. Schuler, board members. I'll be providing the JCPS transportation update today for September 26th. As you know, I believe it was four weeks ago, we provided you with our last update on the transportation, and wanted to make sure, well, I did it in my, my superintendent's report was, so it's been about six to seven weeks since we provided an in-depth report. Obviously, we've come a long way in that time. We've reviewed a lot of things. We have the RFP released right now that should we do to come back for an external audit, as you requested, on the first day of school that we had, plus our, what our transportation department looks like organizationally, and maybe some changes we need to make in that regard as well. So tonight, I want to provide you with this update as requested. We want to make sure that we give you an honest look at data and what we deal with on a daily basis, the challenges we have, some of the things we've improved, some of the things we still have to get better, and quite candidly, some of the real concerns long-term nationally around transportation and what it may look like for schools across America over the next decade. So as you can see, we've made a lot of progress since August 9th. The most recent step that has been to bring our early childhood students back, we brought those students back yesterday. I would, I was very pleased to see 81% of our early childhood students show up on the first day of school. That was, once again, without that transportation piece built in, we will, I'll be talking about that a little bit later. But we did see a very large number of our early childhood kids arrive, and that was excellent. Some of the other things we've made since we last met, we have what are called no-show stops, meaning stops that were built in, students may have moved, students may have gone to a different stop, may go to a different school. Had about 7,500 no-show stops. So those first couple of weeks, bus drivers are stopping at those stops to see if a child is there. We've been able to eliminate that. That has improved efficiency in a great deal. Route consolidation and efficiency, find ways to, yes, we've had to consolidate routes so that we can free up some buses, and you're going to see the numbers around those as we've come. One of the things, and I'll say this, you know, I think two things have impacted us greatly. First and foremost, the severe bus driver shortage that so many districts are facing right now. Second of all, our systems and technology on day one were not where they needed to be to meet that demand. And so that is where we fell short, clearly. That's part of it. I think another part that we fell short on was not preparing the community, our schools, and you all enough to realize the challenges that are being faced on a daily basis right now. And so that's a part of this now, but we have definitely been working on that significantly. The Edge of Law Parent Portal Light App was an important part for us as well to make sure that parents could see where their bus was in real time. We're going to talk about some other technologies that we have found that disappointingly, we have not implemented in our district and should have implemented. Incentives for drivers. And so right now, I would put our pay for drivers up against nearly anyone in the nation, especially for those who are running challenging routes. And I want to talk about that a little bit. So we added these early childhood runs that were at 10, for the 10:30 time and the 1:30 time. We have to use our existing drivers to do that. We could not add another 125 routes to our fleet. It was just not possible. And so we made those a challenging run. Other types of challenging runs, the ones that were already built into our system that were challenging runs that had been identified for many years. Any route that is after 6:00 PM, that is scheduled to conclude after 6:00 PM, which is a smaller number, but those are also considered challenging runs as well. Now, there's one other I'm missing, I'm sorry, it slipped my mind. But in the end, if a driver has one challenging route, this is for all of their hours, they get an additional $5 an hour. If they have two of those criteria, it's $7.50 an hour. Three of those criteria, it is $10 an extra an hour. So when you look at our bus drivers, if they take on any of these challenging routes and they are a part of the incentive, the attendance incentive, a stat four, which is a driver who's four years in, would make $37 an hour, and their overtime would be $57 an hour. I would put that up against anyone in the nation when it comes to what we're paying our bus drivers right now. But we have added that, that is on tonight, to your consideration, as an approval on the consent agenda, those increased dollars for bus drivers. Also, we are asking that you increase our teachers or that certified staff who want to drive buses back to their hourly rate instead of $25 an hour. So our certified staff that were driving buses will make, on average, about $50 an hour to do that. After tonight, it's your approval, that will be a part of the process as well. And then adding Miller Transportation with 22 buses, Everdriven is a company that helps us with our special needs students, and then eight passenger vans available that we have as well. So we've been using all of these. I think one of the most important things we found, we know that when we had a 7:40 and a 9 o'clock start time, that's it, there was a lot more leeway in between a 7:40 and 8:40 and a 9:40 start time. And so anytime we had to stop the buses or the trains, so to speak, because a parent wasn't waiting for their child, or a kid missed their bus stop, whatever it may be, circling back would cause major delays, especially to those depots. So finding ways to meet the needs of those kids by using vans and other drivers to do that has been very important for our efficiencies. I also wanted to update you on the calendar. I think this is important for the community to know what we are asking on the consent calendar tonight. We would like to get our calendar updated so that we are meeting all of the hours that we did not go to school on the end of that first week and that second week. And so as you know, the state requires that we have 1,062 instructional hours. We would like, like I said again, get flushed, so we're not going into the summer right now. We are asking you to forgive four of those student days, and then to make up two days that are non, non-student days, they are staff days right now, but not student days, which are November 6th and January 8th, and transform, transfer those into student days as well. And what that would mean then by January 8th, with your approval, we would be back on track to end this, to have the calendar exactly as it is right now and not have to go into the summer. Once again, we will most likely be ambitiously using NTI days if we do have weather days so that, once again, we can finish by the end of the school calendar. So that's a little bit of update on the school calendar. And so let's talk about our challenges right now, a little bit of the opportunities we have. First of all, once again, I don't want to use this as an excuse for us, but there is no doubt rural, suburban, urban, there is a bus driver shortage nationwide. We are seeing in school districts across America just unbelievable things that I thought we'd never see, from not transporting students at all unless it is federally required, to paying parents to transport their students. We could go on and on, city after city that is struggling with this. And so that is a huge challenge, and I'm going to show you the numbers in just a second. Our bus driver call-ins, and you'll see in a second that when we have a large amount of call-ins for sick or vacation days or whatever that may be, that puts us underwater, so to speak, in the number of drivers we have based on routes. And so just for an example, our most challenging days to deal with are Mondays and Fridays, no question about it. And so just to give you Friday, September 22nd, last Friday, we had 60 drivers call in out of our fleet of about 575. Our average drivers per day is about 44. So as you can see, on Mondays and Fridays, we have about 16 more call-in than we do on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. We are working hard to recruit drivers. I will tell you, we are being very assertive, using technology and some other companies to help us attract drivers because I really do believe, right now, there is a finite number of bus drivers out there. So as we look to other counties to try to take drivers, you know, there is only a certain number of those. But what we can do is search for those that may want to get their CDL because I think it's very hard to find a job that competes with $37 to $57 an hour. So we just had 11 drivers pass their new CDL test, and they will begin on the road September 30th. So we are adding 11, and we have six more that are beginning their CDL testing next week. So we hope within the next couple of weeks, we'll be adding 17 new bus drivers to our fleet. And then I told you about the the hourly bonus pay for the challenging routes, routes, excuse me, and after 6 o'clock and the $6 attendance bonus for our drivers. All of these things are things that we have built over time that we are continuing to support with more drivers. And so let's take a look at the numbers that we face right now, and I think this gives you an honest assessment and picture of where we are. So let's start with 2015. These are full-time drivers. Notice at the bottom, full-time drivers includes ORDs. We call ORDs our open route drivers, meaning they come every day and they'll pick up any route that they need, they're experts on it. So we have a number of ORDs who will just pick up whatever route is needed for that day. In 2015, which we know, you know, eight years ago, we had 975 routes with full-time drivers of 1,080 full-time drivers. And these numbers mirror many other districts across the United States right now. So this is not something that is just JCPS, just urban, rural, it is all of our districts. Last year, we had 740 routes and 650 drivers. So we were 90 drivers underwater every single day. Now, remember, this is before call-ins. And so, you know, averaging 40 to 50 call-ins a day, last year, like we did, we had about 740 routes and a little over 600 bus drivers on a daily basis. So you can see how difficult that was. Here is our current numbers. Thankfully, we are down to 568 routes. And I'm going to say that makes it difficult, that makes buses more crowded, there is no doubt about it, it makes it more challenging when it comes to bus stops and all of those things. But right now, we have 568 routes and we have 578 bus drivers. Adding in, hopefully, those 17 new ones we talked about, you know, that gets us over 590 bus drivers. But as you can see, when there are 60 out or even 44, that puts us a little underwater every single day, and then they're scrambling around to make that work. But I can't say enough about what that has, how thin that has stretched our system. When we are talking eight years ago, we had 975 routes. And I will say this, we provided less services eight years ago than we do today because we have added district-wide magnet schools. When we add district-wide magnet schools, that means everyone from all over the county can get transported to that school. Reminder, our geographic area we cover is four times the area of Boston Public Schools geographically. And so that just goes like how much we have to do. But taking it from 975 to 568 makes it about as thin as it can possibly be. And so for us, you know, where we were in error, without a doubt, that first week is not changing our systems from what we were doing in 2015 when there were 975 routes and 1,080 bus drivers, nor changing our technologies. And that really led to our issues on that first day of school, the massive delays that happened, that we just had to dig in and change these efficiencies. And so I think this is efficiencies. And so I think this is an important one. I want to thank this board because I know a lot of this, we are wrapping in new start times with our bus driver shortage. If we had stayed on the same plan that we had done last year, if we had stayed on those same bell times and provided all the same services that we have, we would have 850 routes this year because we're working on two student assignment plans. So if you could go back one slide, please. So 850 routes, we would have 578 full-time drivers with 850 routes. And so I can't even begin to talk about the disaster that would be 850 routes or 850 routes with 578 bus drivers. We would be having to cancel 225 routes every single day. So I think yes, the start time got wrapped into this and there are challenges with that. But without that, we would be in much more crisis mode than we are right now. So let's look at our efficiencies. I want to be clear about our expectations. Please note that our last school ends 40 minutes after it did last year. So when we say 6:30, if we compare that to last year, you know, you were looking at a 5:50 end time, which is what was last year, about two hours to get the last student home. And so that is our goal every single night to get the last student off the bus at 6:30 PM. So what we did, we just wanted to give you a picture of last Thursday. Friday was more difficult. There's no doubt. The less drivers we have, the more difficult it is. September 21st at 6:30 PM, which was our goal, you know, once again, we have about 575 buses on the road. We still had 15 on the road at 6:30 PM. So that didn't meet our goal, but percentage wise, that's pretty darn good. And at 6:30 PM, we still had 69 out of our 66,000 kids to try to, you know, to make sure we got. So continuously, that is our goal, 6:30 PM. All students were dropped off by 7:00 PM that day. Once again, I'll say this, Mondays and Fridays are more difficult. This was a Thursday, which makes it a little easier because we have more drivers on that day. But that is our goal with efficiencies. But I will say this, doing that is very challenging and difficult every single day and it won't get any easier for the remainder of this year and will challenge us to make tough decisions. And so I want to talk a little bit about trends with routes and drivers. So our ridership has remained consistent since 2010. We typically have between 65 and 70,000 students riding JCPS buses every day, which I think would put us, I don't have this data anecdotally. I will say this, I'm sure percentage wise, that puts us as one of the tops in the nation percentage of students that we are transporting. And so that has increased, but I also wanted to see the number of schools we transport students to has increased. So Grace James Academy, W E B Du Bois are both district-wide magnets, which means from all corners of the county, just like Manuel and Mail and all other students. So we've added those. Echo Trail, Hudson Middle are also new schools. So that has added routes as well since that time. And so we've tried to consolidate routes and modify start times to accommodate this bus driver shortage. I think we've been effective in some ways because once again, if we hadn't done that, we'd be sitting there with 850 routes and 575 bus drivers, which would just not be something that we could do. Additional data points that I want to share, this is based on the average of the first 21 days of school. Now, we've had some challenges collecting data because the Kentucky Department of Education has changed a code we would use as students logged into school that we was late as on a late bus so that the student wouldn't get penalized for that. We have had to create our own system because KDE removed that so that we can track that and continue to provide you with data on late students to school. And so right now on an average day, and I want to say late right now is actually we have a lot of buses showing up right at the start time. So if the start time's 8:40, we've got a number of buses that are pulling into the parking lot at 8:40. We are marking those students as late because even though it may be four or five minutes by the time they get to class, that's still four or five minutes they miss. So on a daily basis, we have about 5,200 out of our 66,000 estimate that are arriving late to school. It's about 8% of our total bus drivers. Right now, we are unable to provide an exact comparison from last year to this year. For that purpose, starting on September 30th, we will have those codes in place so that at our next update and moving forward, we can provide you comparisons from this year to last year. Although I feel very confident you will see a great decrease in the number of minutes. Average number of minutes, instructional minutes lost per student is about 13 and a half minutes per day. We do have when we are very short on bus drivers, that can be higher, but that is the average. And so I think that's a significant improvement over last year, but we will be able to show you that data now that we're able to track that code. And then as you can see, average number of afternoon buses late per day is about 42 buses late per day of what they were scheduled to be. And so a lot of that is because once again, we have drivers that are out and we have to figure out alternative ways to cover those routes. So on the horizon, a couple of things that I wanted to say, I've talked about the technology a lot. The technology, I can't say enough, I told you this last time, how disappointed I was when I've seen what is out there. And so first of all, we can get turn-by-turn directions, GPS directions for our bus drivers. Now, bus drivers by now, they're pretty strong with their routes. They've done it 40, 50, 60 times. But if a sub has to get on that bus, what we have now, they are working off a paper copy of routes that says, take a left on this street and a right on that street. If someone is picking up another run, the same thing is happening. We need turn-by-turn GPS directions. When administration adds a stop, it automatically populates into that GPS for the bus drivers. We are continuing to expand our work with Edge Log and looking at Parent Porter app capabilities. Some of the things on buses now that I expect to be in place that we have not had in place. For the past 10 to 12 years, we have worked on tagging our students, their backpacks, their cards with pieces of paper that has their bus number and their stop on it. Now the technology is there that a student gets an ID card and scans into the bus. The bus, that scan then tells the bus driver if the student's on the right bus, has a picture of the student. And then when this driver pulls up to the stop, it tells the driver which student should be getting off of that bus on that particular stop. And if a student is not getting off of that bus, and here is a problem. We have students who fall asleep on a bus and they're laying down and the bus driver stops, student doesn't get on, continues on 10 miles down the road. And I want to say this is not an issue. This is not a bus driver issue. This is a technology issue. They may have to circle back and then take that kid back. Now, with that technology, the students would be able to then, the bus driver would be notified if a student is not getting on the bus, getting off at the wrong stop. This will solve many of our challenges on day one that I can't wait to implement. To the point, within the next couple of years, I think there will be facial recognition on buses so that they won't even need ID cards. There will be facial recognition for students getting on buses. We will now have cameras on all buses that will help us monitor our, any bus accidents we have immediately. I will say this, our cameras on the buses right now are hard driven. So when a, we need to find out if a student got off of a bus at a certain stop because they didn't get home, we have to wait till the bus gets back to the compound, take the hard drive off of the bus, download it to a computer to look at who was getting off of the bus. The technology with Edge Log now allows anyone with access and a password to pull that up, watch it live or immediately punch in this bus number and see if a student got off the bus at the right stop. So the technology is just, I mean, our techno, it's just surpassed us in many ways. That has disappointed us in many ways that we have not kept up with that technology, but it is something we are working towards and will bring you that as soon as we can possibly get these implemented. And then continued targeted recruitment of bus drivers. We are using some advanced technology companies to do that. And then evaluation of our current transportation systems, how we do that, how we do things like add stops. So we had a whole lot of people adding stops and the times were not adjusted appropriately, which ended up with first day problems when it came to how long a route would take. And so that, that kind of gives you a feel of what we have to come and the things that we're working on. Future transportation considerations. I do want to say this, this is an important part of the presentation that I think is so important. We will not be at the current rate, which is as you've seen, we dropped 75 to 100 bus drivers a year, usually based upon retirement of bus drivers and not filling as many that are retiring. It's often the same thing that is happening right now in the teaching field. More are retiring than are coming into the business. And that is not a really good recipe for what's going to happen in the future. Me personally, this is my personal opinion, I think we have real concerns educationally across America in the future of bus transportation, the way it looks right now. I talked to colleagues all across this nation facing the same thing right now. So we have gotten to a point now where we are able to manage this. It is not ideal. There is no doubt about that. And I, I agree, we are holding it together as best we possibly can right now. I fear making major changes to the system right now because we would have to reroute every child, reroute every bus, re-tag every student and go through that same process again, plus pull transportation potentially away from families that already have it. But I do believe this, as we enter the winter months and moving into the spring, we are going to have to evaluate these four options that I have pulled for you and decide which ones that we want to share with the community and make a decision on. We will also be able to give you information on the success of paying our parents, giving them a stipend. That is for your approval today as well. $5 a day to transport an early childhood student to school, which would be approximately $100 a month. We would be giving those families about $700 to $800 over the course of the year to transport their students to school. Once again, 81% of the families transported their students to school for early childhoods. So I think we will get a lot taking us up on that. That is an option we need to explore. Here are some other options when we talk about removing services. First option is to transport all of our magnet traditional students. And when I say this, there's a few options. These options are only for students at full magnets or full traditional schools. We can bring some more data for students who attend other schools other than their resides. All right, that would increase dramatically the amount of routes we would be saving. But what this would do, some other cities do this. So for instance, if a student lived in Middletown, let's say, out past Eastern High School, out past the Gene Snyder, and they were attending Manuel High School. Right now, we send a bus to their house, we take them to a depot, they get on another bus and go on to Manuel High School. This option would say we will provide you transportation as long as you get to a hub. And so a hub may be Eastern High School, for instance. It may be in other cities, it's large shopping center parking lots. There's a multitude of things, but we would tell that parent potentially in Middletown, we'll take you onto Manuel, but you must get them to the hub first. And so if we did all that and you saw the numbers, right now, we've got about 500 when our new and 90 bus drivers for about 575 bus routes. This would take us down to about 500 routes total if we did this. And so, you know, hopefully that would put us above water for next year, depending on some of our aggressive recruiting that we're doing for bus drivers. But I did want you to see, now these are approximate. We are running, you know, the hard part is running these scenarios, which means you have to look at every single route to see what that would mean. So it's an approximate right now, but we're comfortable in saying on the conservative side, that would be 60 to 70 routes. Option two would be, we would only transport free and reduced lunch students, our magnet and traditional students. Once again, all magnet schools, all traditional students. The only ones we would provide any transportation to would be those that are free and reduced lunch. I failed to note at the bottom, see the star below, asterisk below, the JCPS currently transports nearly 16,000 magnet and traditional students. And so if we only set free and reduced lunch students that go to our magnet traditional schools, we would be saving conservatively 95 to 100 routes. That would put us down to about 475 routes, hopefully with that 555, 575 bus driver, which would be where we really need to be. Option three would be only, so we would use the hub model, but the only students who would have access to the hub model would be those free and reduced lunch students. So option two was doing, taking them from their door to a hub and then the hub to the school. Option three, once again, is less even our free and reduced lunch students must get to the magnet hubs, the traditional hubs, which would save us close to 110 routes. So we would be, you know, getting down there in the 565, excuse me, 465 range. And then finally, option four, which would be the most aggressive, so to speak, as far as eliminating services, would be we only, we eliminate transportation to all magnet and traditional students. There are some equity issues we obviously have to talk about there. That would save us around the range of 140 routes. Now, once again, if we said, you know, we have magnets at many of our schools that attract kids from all over the county. So high school closest to us, Atherton and their IB program. We transport students from all over the county to that IB program. But it would obviously impact access to that program as well. If we looked at those as well, we would be getting up into the 175 route range. And so you can see if we did this right here, you're starting to get down now closer to about 500, excuse me, 415, 420 routes with hopefully those 575 bus drivers. So none of these are easy answers. None of them are things that we want to do. We provide more services than any other district, I would say, anywhere. And that's why our numbers are so high. I would remind you that no matter what, our special need transport students receive transportation in all scenarios. And so if it is on the student's IEP, we federally must provide transportation to that student and their school. There are some things around McKinney-Vento as well for homeless students that we must provide transportation as well. Those are the mandated transportation that we have no choice around. But we did want to provide these four options. These are not exhaustive, so to speak. These are four options that we could use. I think in my opinion, what we need to do with this is really have some conversations in the community. We cannot continue though with the services that we provide with crowd, they're very uncrowded buses, so to speak, without giving somewhere. And that giving somewhere is late to school, late picking up, all of those things. Once again, if I'd had it to do over again, I would have presented this more in the June range so that we could see that this is what we are facing, but we did not do that. But these are four options that we can consider. I think taking them to the community, having honest conversations throughout the course of the year and then implementing one of these before we start next year is going to be imperative for us. And so that concludes. Thank you for your patience on that. I know that was a little bit longer, but I think it was very important information for all of you to have as we continue to update you on this. Once again, we should have a selection for our RFP for the external auditor. In the next couple of weeks, we'll share that with you. As we do that, we will get some recommendations back. We're asking in three months on day one problems and then more like a six month when we look at our transportation system as a whole and some recommendations to this board. Thank you and we'll take any questions or comments that you have.
Thank you, Dr. Folio. We know this has been a tough two months, but you have led values and we appreciate you. Mr. Marshall?
Thank you, Dr. Show. No questions, just a quick comment. I think this is a great time to highlight showcase the schools coming up. So for those families that may be frustrated with those longer bus rides, there's a great opportunity to get to know other schools and other options, other leaders that may be closer to their home and still can provide a great educational experience. So that's all I want to throw out there. Thank everybody for the hard work. It has not been easy, but we're just hoping that as we move forward, our community accepts the reality of the situation and how much everyone is doing the most that they can with what they have right now. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. I would like to reiterate with our new student assignment plan that was passed in June of 2021, all of our students have the opportunity, K6, 9 will continue to do that, to go to a school close to their home if that's what they choose. And so when we hear narratives around stop, you know, every kid that is not choosing their school choice close to home, that's a family choice. That is not a district choice.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Ms. Duncan?
Well, this is, this is kind of hard.
Well, this is, this is kind of hard because I know so much work is going into all of this and so much time is spent creating this proposal or these proposals. But, you know, there's so many, so many things that are fails out there right now, and and those are what we hear about when kids don't get to school, and I mean, and you're here twenty minutes to fifty minutes, and you said average thirteen, but any of those kids not getting to school on time is a, is a difficult thing for, for the child to come into the class and, and always be late like that. It's very difficult. We have the elementary kids, and I keep worrying about, we've got them coming home late, and you say six-thirty and seven, and, you know, right now, it's light, and then in another few weeks, it's going to be dark and they're going to be getting off these buses. And to me, that's not a good system, if you can, if you have to let elementary kids get off buses in the dark and walk to their homes, that's, that's not a good system, there's something way wrong with that. And, you know...
If I could, I would like to add, last year, we had kids being dropped off elementary at six o'clock, and it gets dark at five-twenty in November, December, January, and February, so I don't... Yes, it is later, but that was happening last year as well.
Well, it's not, it's not good, though. I don't want them out there in the dark walking, and that, to me, is, is just not a good system. But we're doing what we have to do right now, and I understand that. You know, one of the things, this is all fueled by our driver shortage. And while we know this is happening everywhere, Dr. Polio, if we talk to drivers and people who just recently retired, who are calling, they are calling, and they are telling you, telling us what has driven them out. And let's assume that if behavior is driving them out, because they said it's not the hours and it's not the money. It's, it's the behavior of the students and the unpredictable nature of, of people getting on their buses, not the, the treatment that they receive while they're on the buses from the students. And let's assume that that is the reason that they're leaving us and that we can't get them. We've got to stop the bleeding, I mean, we can, we can try and increase riders, like, or drivers, like we're, we're doing, and those, those are good proposals. Getting teachers, more teachers to drive for us is great. I think we ought to look at our maintenance people as well and see if we can offer them twenty-five dollars an hour like the bus drivers to be able to help us, because lots of them would be willing to do that. But, and we can reduce our riders, but if we keep bleeding drivers, we've got to figure out what's causing them to go, and, and we've got to talk with them, and we've got to hear from them so that they tell us who is not supporting them. Not us, but tell you who is not supporting them. Because I'm telling you, they're seeing that consequences aren't being met and that students are, when they, it's like referrals are, are not productive. They turn them in, they've quit turning them in in so many cases because they're not productive. So, I, I just want us to, to keep thinking, how can we, if, if it is behavior, what can we do to stop this from driving our drivers away the way that they are? And if, you know, if we didn't hear from people recently retired and were telling you why they got out, you know, I could dismiss it, but I can't dismiss it like this. One of the things that, I had a question about...
May I respond to that?
Sure.
Well, I think that, you know, one of my major frustrations, Ms. Duncan, is I balance every single day the our accusations of us over disciplining students and then the, of us under disciplining students, and I hear it equally. And I said to legislators yesterday, how can we be accused at the same time of over disciplining students and under disciplining students? And so, yeah, the, the, the real challenge comes with special needs students, without a doubt, because we are required by law to transport students if they're special needs. There is, there is not a way we can say you are not allowed to transport students. But, you know, I am open to that conversation, and if, if that is something that this board wants to entertain around not allowing students to ride the bus after certain amounts, that's something we can discuss. I will tell you, the impact that will have on achievement will be fairly high. And so, we've just got to balance that out and say, what are the unintended consequences of that? And so, but I'm, you know, we are, we are open to that discussion, there is not at any time, you know, we don't want to be supportive, but this is a narrative nearly in every city and district in America right now, and so, it's obviously a greater issue than just the eight of us can tackle sitting up here, but I'm open to that conversation, I'm open to that conversation with bus drivers.
Well, I hope so, because I, I do think, I don't want that to be something that's, that's causing us to bleed people the way that we are, and I know that, I know that it is. And we'll, we'll see whether, whether this continues or not, because we're trying to get more in. And if we're trying to get more in and we're losing them still, we need to know why, but what are we doing wrong on that? What about, you mentioned instructional minutes a while ago, and are, does the state look at that for us when our students are missing instructional time like this? I mean, is this going to come back on us in some way?
No, it's not, this, to my understanding, though, that is something that is excused by because of buses, it's not against the family or the school district. And what we found is nearly every district in the Commonwealth is struggling with this right now. And I'm going to tell you, an option, an option I did not propose that most districts are using right now in the state is we just say, we don't have a bus for you today, sorry. And we send out notice in the morning and say, bus twenty-eighty-three will not run today, good luck, you know, get, get to school. We have not done that, there have been some instances, you know, our policies and procedures have said not to do that. We've had a few instances of that where we've had to deal with, with miscommunication. But, you know, that is an option as well, that if we get to a certain point, we just announce these buses will not run today. I don't think that's ideal, but that is something that could be done.
Well, I had a, had a complaint today on the five-dollar gas card, which people are not understanding, we're not really meaning that that's going to pay for all your gasoline. We're really meaning that that's money we're willing to, to, to give to you to help you toward that gas expense. And, because we know at five dollars a day, it might be more than that, especially if they're transporting more than one child.
And that may be something to consider when we talk about outside of early childhood. Remember, we assign students to early childhood based upon the facility closest to their home.
Right.
And so, you know, there is, most of the students are being assigned, I can't say all of them, but most of those students are being assigned within a few miles of their home.
Yeah, I, I thought about that suggestion a little bit, and then, for me, I, I think people have to understand, it could be zero. You know, we're, we're just trying to give something toward that to help them with the cost of transporting their kids. But I do think that's an option that we need to, to keep in our, our thoughts, how we can help parents, encourage them to, to do the transporting. But all that has its own complications too, so, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan. Mr. Craig?
Thoughts on what the community feedback proposal will look like? Or have you had an opportunity to consider that?
On the four options?
On the four options.
I really have not yet at this point had the, the ability to get the team together and say what that will be. I mean, obviously, what we've been very successful in is doing some virtual online ones. We get the absolute most feedback when we do that and allow everyone to, as opposed to being in person. But as we always do, I think it's going to have to be a combination of both and really making sure we talk to all families. I just think the community needs to know that, you know, the days of all students being transported to all schools is, is at the end of that road. And, and so, we're just going to have to have some discussions about what that will look like. But, so we don't have that now, but I know it will need to be substantial.
Initial feedback, just from the people who's, but I speak to a lot of magnet, traditional parents in the East End, and I think a lot of people are excited about the hub idea as opposed to just losing transportation, which they know is also on the table. But I think that there would be support across the county for at least that option.
I think anecdotally, I've gotten from them as well that they would support the hub model, so I think that's something we've got to really look into. The challenge we have to find is where we place those hubs in a safe way, where we don't burden our current schools. So, if we use Ballard High School or Eastern High School as a hub right now, there's a lot of traffic going into those schools already to start the school days, and we don't want to add five hundred more cars coming in at the same time, so...
But there are a lot of shopping centers out there.
So, that's what, and making sure it's safe, so it, it's going to take some planning, but I think that's a very valid option for us to consider.
Anticipated timeline for this, because this board is going to need to have a time to make a decision before June of twenty-four, of course.
What we would like to do, like I said, when we first started this, we talked about possibly making some adjustments. When we had a discussion about it, though, there was no way we were going to change all the routes or make better efficiency without eliminating some of the transportation. And so, we just felt like we've gotten it to a place that's not ideal, but much, much better than it was. And so, you know, I would like to bring, as we start to discuss this in January, like we've done, I think our most effective change votes have been when we've discussed them in the wintertime, have a month or two, six to eight weeks of communication with the community, and then vote, you know, late February, early March. And it gives enough time for families, if they need to change schools, they can change schools. But I think that's what we're going to have to, that's the timeline I'm thinking about.
Is the current system sustainable without us trying to do one of these four options in the second semester?
Here's what we're going to do, we're going to keep exploring these. Obviously, the hub, the one that is the lightest, I will say, I don't know if that's the right word or not, to implement, where we're not eliminating altogether, would be one that we're going to continue to keep exploring and potentially look at if we get to a spot in December where it is not sustainable, it may be something we would implement for January. The challenge is, once again, you know, our bus drivers are just doing an amazing job. And, you know, I know it would help, but would also require us to reroute fifteen thousand kids. And so, it would be rerouting a whole lot of buses. So, we are using that as a potential. I would like to say, yes, it is sustainable to the end of the year, but if something does start to, you know, show fissures and cracks in it, we would bring you that plan.
I know, if we had to do that, we need some precision around the actual number of routes that we saved, and
Correct.
We have that precision. Just taking a step back and looking backwards, we don't have data points to compare to last year yet, but do you think that we're still saving considerable minutes in the classroom as compared to where we were last year?
Yeah, I don't want to get out in front of that too much without seeing the data. My feeling is, yes, I mean, we were, you know, we were getting daily students to school two and three hours late last year. And so, I mean, that was a whole list of buses. And so, you know, with many of them being much shorter time, and that's still a problem, as Ms. Duncan said, I don't want to minimize ten minutes or twenty minutes missing class, but there's definitely a difference in two hours or three hours, and so... But I don't want to say that for sure until I get the data, but my feeling is, yes. But I really need to get a better picture of the data before I guarantee that.
And the timeline for the data was?
Well, we are starting with the ability to code it for schools to come in, starting next, next week, or October ninth, when we come back. So, we should have a multiple week report for you by the, uh, uh, second or third week in October.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Ms. McIntosh?
Thank you. Gosh. I want to, I'm going to try to be brief because I have a lot of thoughts and, and questions, and I know brevity is not my gift. I do want to piggyback on some of the things that Board Member Duncan was discussing with regard to student discipline, and I just want to echo that that is the number one thing that I hear about from staff members, parents, bus drivers, other students, that there are kids who don't feel safe to ride their bus because the other students on their bus behave in such ways that they cause fear for the other kids. And so, then it becomes not the student who has been violent or dangerous or bullying, but rather the other students who have to then adjust how they get to and from school, and their parents are the ones who are inconvenienced or having a difficulty. So, I do want to explore those conversations about long-term suspensions or removals, and I understand that there are some legalities with the federal laws for students with IEPs. Not all IEPs do have to have transportation written into them. And so, I think that that's something that we could consider moving forward when our, when our teams are riding the IEPs, if it's...
I would also think that part of the discussion needs to be what data from federal government, such as Office of Civil Rights, would be considered a violation there as well. I mean, we are getting into very difficult waters.
I absolutely understand that, but I also want to consider the civil rights of the students who have been put in...
But it's not my decision, it's not, I'm not saying I'm the one deciding, I'm saying that is,
I know.
That is what we have to navigate.
Sure, sure, but I, I think that that's definitely something we have to consider, because the parents who are sending their kids to school who repeatedly fight, and I'm not talking about typical kid behaviors, and I want to make that very clear, and I'm not discussing, or I'm not, you know, intending this to be for students with learning differences, I'm talking about violent behaviors, the constant fighting, multiple fights, bringing weapons to school, coming to school with ankle monitors because the court system finds it important enough to keep track of their whereabouts. I think those are the students that we're talking about, we're not talking about paper wides and spit wides and playing music too loud, certainly. I, I think we need to explore those conversations. Also, with regard to the bus drivers and their pay, I, I support paying them everything that they're worth. I'm not sure how many teachers will have tickets up, how many we have in the past. I know we had some data on that before because that just makes really long days. So, I think the recruitment and the retention of the folks that we have are probably going to be...
It's not a huge number, but there are some, and we lost some because it went from, it went to twenty-five dollars an hour during the negotiation with JCTA. And so, taking that back to where it was will hopefully bring some back, it's, it's not a huge number, though.
And would that include, I know we've lost a lot of field trip opportunities, would they be able to drive for field trips and activity bus as well?
No, because they're on their work, they're, it's during their work, it has to be outside of work hours to get that overtime pay. We're already paying them.
Okay.
So, if they're taking...
It could be active.
So, if it was after, like, after hours, yes. But if it is two, or one to two o'clock to go to the zoo or something like that, no, they're already on, on the clock for that.
Okay, but if they're willing to drive so that their students can partake in those opportunities, are they...
Okay, she's jumping in.
Sorry, just, I want to clarify because it's very clear in the, the attachments, this is just to drive the bus for transporting students like bus drivers do.
Okay.
The supervision activity bus is still twenty-five dollars an hour.
Okay, thank you. I, I, as far as the other parts of transportation, I do think the hubs are probably a, a great compromise, and, and we might want to talk about that. I think one of the difficult parts now is that our students who are already enrolled in a traditional or magnet program, their kid, their, their parents chose those schools with transportation being an option for them. And so, if we move to reducing our ridership, I, I agree that I think the hubs are probably a good way to go, and I won't go into my long list of questions that I have about those. Rent liability and supervision were the first three things that came to mind. Have we've got an answer on, based on our number, because I, I want to work backwards on this problem, or as I think through it, we have, we have a finite number of drivers, buses, how many students could we reasonably and efficiently transport? And then, maybe we could work and see who, which riders we would have to eliminate or reduce services for, and I'm thinking of hubs as like reducing a service. And I'm thinking of hubs as like reducing a service. So I, I would like to see like what our system, and that might be something that the outside auditors do for us, but I think starting with how many could we reasonably do, and then working backwards to fill those seats. I don't know if that makes sense to anybody else, but that's how I'm looking at this problem.
It does. The, the challenge with that is the specificity of school choice. So I'm just going to use an example that if we had a student who lived off of Dixie Highway and chose to go to Atherton, they might be taking up, their first bus might only have seven students on it. And their second bus might have 60 students on it. And so it's just a little bit harder, and I'm not saying it's impossible to, it's just not like, okay, how many bu, bus drivers times by 60, like that's the student. And so that choice fabric really makes it a little more challenging, but I'm sure we can do something like that.
So I know that we have, I, I know I'm out of time, but I do still have questions that I think are important. My kiddo is one of the kids who gets to school late anytime she does have to ride the bus. Thankfully, I'm able to take her a couple of days a week. Last Thursday, I received the automated text at 7:59 in the morning that her bus was going to be two hours late. But her pickup time is like 7:30, 7:35-ish. So had I not had a doctor's appointment and just happened to be home that day, I would have left her on the corner in the neighborhood and started heading toward work, which is 45 minutes away. And then my husband, he's another 45 minutes away in the other direction. So we're, we're living this, this bus life, along with a lot of the, the folks in the community.
Most likely, that was a late call in, you know, someone who may have called in sick at a very late time. And so, you know, that happens, that happens with teachers, unfortunately, when it's a bus driver, that, that makes it challenging. I can't say that for sure, but that's most likely what happened.
Sure. And I understand emergencies happen, but just know that families are getting still those late notifications. And for two hours late, that would have been, you know, a substantial, obviously, part of the day. Because her route is almost an hour. She gets picked up at 7:35 and is still late to her, her school. So that would have had kids get into school, what, three hours late that day that had to ride the bus? Are we, I know this says on the bottom, data was not officially collected on these days. These numbers are shown are, sorry, this is tiny, averages from the previous week's data. So how did we do those averages, like a percentage decrease? Is that what it was? And so I'm looking at this, this one. Katie?
I don't know what that is, I'm sorry.
Oh, number of buses with wait time after dismissal in the afternoon on the 15th. It has it estimated it being 12. And that seems, that seems low from what I'm hearing from families. And then I'm going to circle back to what I'm still concerned about, which is paying our teachers and the stipends to stay after while they're waiting for these, whether they're scheduled to be late or they're just late because of life. I'm really concerned about the, the payment of that, of our staff, if we're going to be able to continue to sustain supervision for our kiddos.
Well, I think we'll be able to sustain supervision. I know that's, that's challenging, but, you know, financially, we'll, we'll continue to support our schools with that.
And all of those funds are coming from Central Office. They're not being asked to take them from their.
So we are doing that month by month, where a school submits their request of what they need. And obviously, we have some that ask for an enormous amount of money. But we are going through a vetting process to say, what is a, an amount of money that is needed for you in September? And then we'll do the same in October. And so, yes, all of that is covered. Now, if the school wants to do something, like keep every teacher after school, then they may be using some of their own funds to do that. But that's a whole different story than the supervision part of it.
And I should know this, but what is the regulatory's ratio for supervision after school? Like how many adults per children?
I don't believe there's a regulatory ratio for that. I don't believe, no.
Okay, but we're not asking like one or two teachers to supervise 100 kids or 50 kids or something?
We should not be. I can't say that, that we should not be, no.
It happens. It is happening. 300, 400.
Well, how about we get the schools to me, and I'll be happy to go deal with it myself.
Um, I mean, honestly, we might need some folks from Central Office to help with the, with these supervisions after school some days. I think our people are getting really, really burnt out, and they're tired, and they're, they're weary.
I'll send Central Office there. I got no problem with that. I'll send Central Office there. We'll, we'll start on when we come back.
Yeah, and if you don't mind, I can answer the month by month. We do have it in ITS where each principal is uploading a descriptive plan on how many they need each day, whether it's AM or PM. And they tell exactly how many kids are staying for 30 minutes, the next 30 minutes, and how many adults they need to safely supervise those kids, and how much it is. We have 84 schools who have submitted, 45 have submitted for AM and PM, 24 for PM only, and another 14 for AM, and we have approved every one of them.
Okay, that, I'm glad to see that it's improving. Or do we have plans from Central Office for activities to keep the kids engaged? I mean, I just, I just keep imagining 25, 40 kids sitting in a cafeteria for two hours, and that's asking for trouble.
Yes, Dr. Greenwood have provided all the principals with their resource for all digital platforms, and all principals and AICs will be trained on our ILC platform, Imagine Learning Classroom. And that will put students on a, on a, on a personalized learning pathway for reading and for math, K through eight.
And it's just screen time, though? Like an Edmentum kind of thing?
Very similar, very similar. There is, there's five pages of resources, so they have multiple options to, to pick from. So the, the biggest challenge is just being more, just knowing who and how many they're going to, to be staying after, and that's what they're planning in ITS, that's what they're using to determine their needs.
Okay. And then I promise this will be my last one of the night, at least on this topic. Who's keeping track of the, I'm going to call it payroll, for lack of better terminology, of our early childhood parents, that $5 stipend? Who's going to keep track of who, like how many days did little Johnny's mom actually bring him, those kinds of things?
Eddie, you want to tackle that one?
And I'll tell you, my, my concern is our, our school clerks, our clerical staff and our, our bookkeepers that are already stretched so thin and underpaid, that I hate putting more on them.
Just an attendance thing, I think. I mean, what they already have to do is.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so basically, we're building a whole new process, a whole new payment vehicle around this program. So the only thing schools will be doing is taking attendance.
Okay, so our, our clerical staff is not going to have any additional paperwork or?
They'll, you, a few small steps that they'll do. There will be a sign up process that can be done online, but they'll have to record attendance on a daily basis throughout the year.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McIntosh. Dr. Cole?
Thanks. The, just upon first glance, the option two seems better to me, but of course, I'm open to feedback, you know, and seeing how things evolve. It's clear, seems pretty clear that we have to reduce ridership. I mean, I, I just don't see a way past that. Do, have we, so we have the $5. I know some school systems, Philadelphia, I think, is paying families 150 bucks a month. I'm, apologies if I have some of the details a little wrong, but have we thought about that? Or is that even legal in Kentucky? I don't even know if it's legal, but.
It is legal for, you mean, do what we do with early childhood with all students?
Yeah.
Yes, that is legal to do that.
Have we thought about or looked at the numbers on paying families substantially more?
So, you know, we are looking at if all early childhood families that we think we estimated about half of them take advantage of this. It may end up being more than that. It's about a $1.1 million for the year. That's about for 1,000 students. So if we were to do the same thing, I think we could look at that ratio to say, you know, if we did it for the 15,000 students that are, you know, let's just say 15,000, that would be $15 million approximately. And so, but we also have to weigh that in, that every route we cut is a huge savings for us in the millions on a year. And so, you know, that is something I think we'll have to bring to you and say, okay, we're cutting a route, bus driver, the insurance, all of the gas that goes with that route, and transferring it to money for parents. And so I can't, this is our first dive into it, but we would bring you some, some numbers on that.
Yeah, I mean, that's something I'd like to see us seriously look at. And thankfully, I mean, I think we'll have some evidence from other school districts as to whether or not it's working there or not. So, yeah, that.
And we may go to Philadelphia to see that and act.
Yeah.
Great.
Great. I mean, and I'm one of the, like, my kid used to ride the bus, loved to ride the bus, goes to a magnet school, you know, so, you know, we were able to transition to taking him, and his nieces and nephews to school in carpool. But, but people in that position that I'm, you know, it was a convenience, you know, to be able to put a kid on the bus. You know, it was a few extra hours during the day where, you know, we got to, my wife and I got to work and, you know, not, not to have to, to do childcare. But the only kids that were legally required to transport are ECE kids, is that correct? Or?
And some homeless McKinney Ventas.
And McKinney Ventas.
But that's a smaller number, but yes.
So, you know, whatever, I think it's much more important, if we offer a service to families, that service needs to be reliable. We can't, in my view, offer a service because we'd like to give families the option, but it turns out to not really be reliable. You know, we, it's, I think, much better just to be clear with families, I'm sorry, like, we're not legally required. This is a service that we've been offering, we can no longer do it, and allow those families to, like mine, to make adjustments. You know, it, it, it would have been easier, I mean, you know, to make that adjustment, just speaking for myself, with some planning as opposed to, you know, the second week of school, the second week of school this year. The, and just, just to remind everybody, you know, because there's a lot of narratives out there and a lot of finger pointing in the community, especially state legislators, but just to remind everybody that the, the Kentucky State Legislature has underfunded transportation.